Mr. Crowell.
Here.
Mrs. Dorish.
Here.
Mr. Fuji.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
And Mr. Schneider's not able to be with us tonight.
Takes us to item five. It is recommended the board approve the minutes of the April 8th, 2021 regularly scheduled meeting.
So moved.
Second. Any issues?
Mr. Fuji.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorish.
Yes.
Mr. Crowell.
Abstain.
Mrs. Lee.
Yes.
All right, lead us to five point two. It is recommended the board approve the minutes of the April 15th, 2021 regularly scheduled meeting. May I have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Mr. Fuji.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorish.
Yes.
Mr. Crowell.
Yes.
Mrs. Lee.
Yes.
Item six, superintendent's report.
Thank you. Starting out with academic achievement, we have Mrs. Jun Young and her very last presentation as director of academic achievement, so I'd like to welcome her for her update.
Thank you. Yes, very last board presentation. So, thank you to all of you for a great six years in this position and excited about the future, but certainly cherish the time I had there at Big Walnut. Um, I want to start by saying I was at Field Day today, and there were kids outside running around. It seemed like a normal year. It was so exciting. It was a really good end to the year to see that today. So lots of fun stuff happening in the buildings. I only have one thing to share today, and that's a fairly big update, which we've already communicated this with our VLP parents. But to share with everyone, we have made the decision to not continue the VLP, our virtual learning program, next year. We added that program this year as to offer something for our families during the pandemic who would prefer to have their children learn at home. With that add, we had to eliminate STEM at the elementary and move those teachers into a virtual learning classroom. So we're excited. One of the things is to get those STEM positions back. And with that, we are not financially able to then hire teachers to do, continue the VLP. It's a, it's a pretty large financial burden, which we had to do this year. But moving forward, also following the guidance from the Health Department and the CDC, we are super hopeful that we'll have all of our students back learning in person in August if things continue. And if something should arise, we get in a crazy situation like we did last year, we pivoted and changed at a moment's notice. So certainly, that's not to say that that wouldn't happen if there were to be some, some large change over the summer. But at this point, we are comfortable saying that we are not going to continue our virtual learning program going into next year and excited, super excited to have all the students back in the buildings. And that's it. Questions?
How many students finished in VLP through the year?
Good question. I do not have the exact number for you, but I will get it for you.
Can we put a dollar amount on what it costs for the VLP?
Well, I can tell you that we didn't do any hiring. A lot of districts had to hire people to staff that, thanks to our principals and our awesome staff. I know at our intermediate middle school and high school, we had our teachers who are teaching in-person students, also teaching online students, remote VLP students during different periods. So in terms of cost, it wasn't any extra cost because we were paying those, those teachers anyway. But when you get down to the elementary, again, we had to eliminate STEM so that we didn't have to hire any positions. So hopefully being able to bring those back. The only actual extra cost, other than having to cut programs or, or cut other things, was the cost of ed mentum, which is the curriculum that we used in grade six through 12. And that program was $8,000 for the year, which is, it's much more expensive if we were to continue it, but they gave kind of like a pandemic sort of promotion. So it was only $8,000. It's really the only substantial additional cost. What cost us was we were, we lost programming and had to move teachers into positions to teach in our VLP.
The, the only additional thing that I'll add is we, we got, as you know, various stimulus dollars, and one of those was called the Coronavirus Relief Fund, CRF dollars. And we got a little over 200,000 in that. And almost all of that went to different things to clean our, our, our buildings. It went towards being able to provide protective equipment, all of that. So almost all of that 200,000 went to the pandemic related. So that is, there are other things I'm sure we could look into, but that I can, I can pinpoint as additional cost to us.
Well, my question was more for the VLP.
VLP, sure.
And I, I've had conversations where the, the parent said the student thrived in VLP. I understand most didn't. But if we eliminate it, and they're thriving in VLP, they're going back to what apparently was an issue for the child to start with.
Yes, and we've had those conversations. And you're right. I, I usually am the one to say, don't forget about the families that are doing well because there are families that it's really worked for. Maybe not the majority, but there are some families who have loved it and are doing really well. When we surveyed, we put out a survey maybe March to our VLP families, asking who, at this point, you're not committing, but who would be interested in the possibility of continuing next year? The numbers were so low that it would require, like elementary, for example, I don't have the exact number, I can off that survey, I can get it for you. But the numbers were so low that it would have basically been, we would have had to put all of our kindergarten, first and second graders together to even make a class. And even then, there might have only been 14 kids. So to pay a staff member, and that's a hard K to two, that's a big span for a staff member, and then only to have 14 kids. So really, to make a full class, it would have had to be all of elementary under one teacher, which isn't really doable. So it just, it just, with that in, low interest, it just gets to the point where the class sizes are so small that it, it's a huge financial burden.
Yeah, if you could get me those numbers.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jen? Jen, I guess, I know she mentioned this, but we will continue to monitor that. Certainly, if things change over the summer. But a lot of the feedback we got too was that many of the families in VLP were doing it more so because they did not want their kids to wear masks at school. We offered it more along the lines of, you know, people had health concerns about being in person. And so we've heard from a lot of those families since the orders are changing at a state level that they're excited to be back. So I think that helped go along with the low return that we got on the survey.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Appreciate it.
Best wishes.
Yes, thank you, Jen.
All right, next up, we have Mrs. Sarah Sandrock, who is our Big Walnut Intermediate Principal. I see she has Powell, our assistant principal. It looks like some staff members have all looked at her, and I'm sure a few of them are coming up. And she's going to be sharing on the intermediate building tonight.
Yeah, so this is actually the first time that Mr. Powell and I get to present about BWI. So our two really normal years, you know, last year ending in March and then this year. But we're really excited to just share what has been going on at BWI the last two, two and a half years. Because as some of you know, I entered BWI three years ago as an instructional facilitator, and then the principal the last two years. So we have copies of our presentation, so I'll go through those slides with you. So I'll start just at the Big Walnut Intermediate slide. So spring 2019. In the winter, when I was, again, an instructional facilitator, we surveyed parents, staff, and even our students about what should we keep doing at BWI? What should we start doing? What should we stop doing? And from that survey, I knew that we needed to really work on our PBIS program, our RTI program, our homework policy. That was mainly from parent feedback. Our scheduling and our pacing guides. We were working on pacing guides at that time. So we'll dig in a little bit to all of those in a couple of slides. And then in 2019, 20, as Mr. Powell and I started as the principal team, culture was key. Building those relationships as new leadership to the building. Those were, that was our main focus. But then we also decided to dive into standards-based grading. And the staff developed a standards-based grading report card. And then we also started our advisory, which we'll get to talk about in more detail. And then 2020, 2021, we really focused in, as many others, on that social and emotional learning in advisory, student data, and implementation of standards-based grading. So Mr. Powell's going to start us off with some of our culture on that second slide I'm going to go through.
So as Ms. Sandrock said, one of the big areas, the glaring areas for us to focus in on our work was to be building a more positive, more beneficial culture within our building with our students and our staff as well. From our 2018, 19 staff survey, that was kind of what, what told us the direction that we needed to go. Upon those results, we, we did some more rate the building culture. We did that in August. And as you see there, kind of the middle of the pack responses. And by the end of the year, we saw that shift towards a more favorable outcome for our building culture. And what we did when we came in, we just felt very strongly that we need to prioritize relationships within our building. And we need to prioritize and be purposeful with providing those opportunities for our staff to build relationships with each other, for our staff to build relationships with our students, and to facilitate those connections between our students as well. So we really hit the ground running with, you know, that is our priority. And, you know, to facilitate some of those things, we created the advisory period where we focus in on some of the SEL things that we do on a weekly basis that we'll be talking about a little bit as well. The SWOT analysis is another thing we looked at. This year, we gave us SWOT analysis, a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to all of our teachers. Some of the things that we saw that stood out to us that was definitely a positive were some answers, I know you all don't have these, but finally reached and identified our culture. That was a quote from one of our teachers. "A major shift in positivity, a fun environment. Staff cares about students and each other. And we have leaders who are present and available." We feel very strongly that putting the work down to build a foundation, a caring community of learners within our building, that that will help us develop the academic, you know, growth that we would like to have follow that. So that was our results there. Sarah?
Yeah, so looking at our CIP goal, our first one is focused around student learning. So you have that in front of you. Our focus this year was on the benchmark scores of our STAR reading and math. We were hoping to reach that 80% that you should reach in that tier one, with that tier one instruction. So as you can see, we started about 67 and a half percent with ELA at the beginning of the year, whole school, and ended with 68%. In math, we started with 73% and ended with 83%. So obviously, we are digging into data on that ELA score, seeing where we jumped a lot from that fall to winter. And then, okay, what happened from that winter to spring? So looking in there, analyzing, looking at our tier one, we're having data conversations with all of our ELA and math teachers this week, digging in, seeing where we can improve that tier one instruction, and then evaluating our tier two and tier three instruction as well in the RTI program. Super excited about those math scores. Huge jumps there, 75 to 83% and 71 to 83%. We're also digging into that growth. So where we don't necessarily see it on benchmark here, we have seen a lot of growth when we dig into our STAR data. So it doesn't matter where a student begins, you know, they, they are showing a lot of growth. So we're also digging into our growth scores, and those are looking very positive. So student learning, to facilitate that, we, like I said, focused on our RTI model. We implemented making connections in Lexia in a blended learning style with our RTI tier two pullout. As I said, the staff in 2019 was working on pacing guides. This allows for those common conversations, those common assessments. It's hard to get a group of teachers together when they're not teaching the same things at the same time to talk about students. So those pacing guides were important. Again, we implemented standards-based grading. That just turns that conversation into compliance and, from compliance to mastery. You don't hear, what do I have to do to get this grade? You hear more of, okay, how can I improve on this? It's all about the learning and that growth. Also, we had a scheduling committee in 2019 because fifth grade had gone to four-person teams, and that was a very overwhelming jump for our fourth graders into fifth grade. The fifth grade teams really felt that they wanted to go back to the two-person team for that transition, so we did that. Also, implementing advisory, teachers wanted a time to be able to reassess, revisit, reteach, a time in the students' day where they could get that intervention specialist getting data. Like I said, the homework policy, which is on our program of studies, we were really all over the place. Team to team was not aligned, so we aligned that, put our policy in place, and we haven't had any issues since then. And again, we're, we're having our, three times a year, our data teams, our data chats focusing on PD on those as well. Mr. Powell's going to talk about whole child.
The next slide we're looking at is our prioritizing the whole child and developing the whole child. And part of that has gone with the creation of this advisory period. We wanted it to be more than just a time to get missed work done. We wanted to really structure it to be a time where kids can connect with kids and adults can connect with kids. And through that, we developed some SEL lessons that connect to our CIP goal number two of having 100% of our staff implementing three SEL lessons per week during that advisory period. And we're happy to say that we have reached that goal this year with 100% of our staff implementing those three SEL lessons. What you're looking at there on that slide with the picture of the two students, those are from a book called Yard Sticks, which goes hand in hand with Responsive Classroom, which has been implemented through our elementaries, and we're implementing aspects of that into BWI. And what those are, that's a snapshot of a child in their development as a fifth grader and as a sixth grader. And we talked about this as a staff, you know, what do our students need to be successful? What do we need to be, you know, connecting with our students at to make sure that they are receiving the maximum benefit from what we are trying to do with them? So through that, we developed those SEL lessons that were implemented there. Some other things that we're doing, our PBIS, our RISE program is something that we're very excited about. So our RISE program, students are caught being responsible, having integrity, showing safety, or having empathy to each other. Then they are, they receive their RISE card. They take that RISE card, they put it in a bucket. Once a month, Sarah and myself come around with a big RISE wheel, prize wheel, a miniature version of what you would see on the Wheel of Fortune. And I got a great boom box that the kids and adults seem to like okay. You've seen it out there for a parent drop-off and pickup as well. We use that go around. We try to generate some excitement during that time. Kids get to spin that wheel if their card gets drawn, and they get a prize. And we make a big hoopla about it, and it's a real good time. Those cards go into a big bucket, and once a quarter, sorry, once a month, we draw for bigger prizes, which have included pizza parties, ice cream parties, design your own t-shirt at Big Walnut Apparel. I always tell the kid, the kids, there's a ticket for riding Mrs. Sandrock's van around the block. They have not drawn that one yet, luckily for us. But those are just some of the things that we're doing to try to generate some more excitement, some more fun in our building, because we truly believe that that will lead to, you know, just BWI being a better place, a great place. So we've been very, very proud of that. Sandra?
So as you can see, our staff has been busy. They have taken on a lot of initiatives, and I just want to stand up here and say we couldn't be more proud. They come with positive attitudes. They tackle everything we've thrown at them. They collaborate around and, and give it a go. They are willing to take those risks, and just like I said, couldn't be more proud. But the work continues. So our future work is really strengthening and refining those recent initiatives, which, again, have been a lot. So just very thankful for an instructional coach next year to be another agent of change on the ground in our classrooms, walking beside our teachers and supporting. We need to work on frameworks. Currently, the elementary have language arts and math frameworks. I would like them to have those at Big Walnut Intermediate.
Could you just explain briefly what that is in case they?
Yes, absolutely. A framework is planning out what a block looks like, what a 90-minute ELA block looks like. What instructional strategies do we expect to see in a 90-minute ELA block or math block? Hopefully, science and social studies in the future too. What do we believe are those strongest instructional strategies that meet the needs of fifth and sixth grade students? So we'll, we'll create those collaboratively as well. Working on that PLC structure and strengthening it, continuing to use high-quality student data to form our instructional decisions. Another goal that we are, I said it in a staff meeting, and I tell you, in our data team meetings this week, five staff members have already talked about how they are thinking about it and implementing it, but writing across content, really taking, especially those ELA scores, and that's when we talked about it, like this is a whole school. We are all responsible. It's not just our ELA teachers. How can we get writing and ELA into math and your related arts and science and social studies? It's easy, but we have to be, and we have to have intent behind it. And then something we're really excited about, and Mr. Firstall's here, and he's helped us get this off the ground too, is student leadership. We are hoping to implement a student leadership just similar to the one at the high school, and I'm not, I'm sorry, I don't know that name. Looking to like even get some mentors from the high school to kind of come down to our leaders, but just increasing. We always say, there are 600 of you and only 60 adults. This is your school. You determine, you know, what your day is going to be like and what the day of the people around you is going to be like. So we are really excited to start building our students into leaders as well. So, lots to do, lots already done, but just want to share that out. All right, any questions?
I want to point out some of these slides that are smaller. You also have like the yard sticks in your pocket.
Yes, the student portraits, our report card, some.
What has the response from parents been to the change in the report card? Was that a difficult transition from a, well, where's the A B or where did that go?
So as a former first grade teacher, that's all I knew, right? So it was, I think it was a little more scary for some of our other staff members who have lived A through F for, for their career. So I was like, we'll, we'll handle those conversations, I promise. And we have not had a single one. So clearly, our teachers are implementing it well, communicating with parents and students, so they know it and own it. So we have not had any of those conversations. When we first announced it, we, we did have some conversations, but since implementation, I have not had any conversations with parents.
I'm curious. You're the first person to be able to share with us some data from the spring. As we've
It's the May.
Yeah. So as we've been hearing from others, I just wonder if you have a hypothesis about the spring data with regards to fifth and sixth grade math. Well, actually, that's not true. Fifth and sixth grade, reading, fifth grade math. Just any general thoughts about, is it a, was it bringing VLP students back onto campus? Was it integration of something? I'm just wondering, big picture, again, hypothesis, not to
So again, Mr. Powell, you have my copy, but still talking to that sixth grade ELA specifically.
Just wondering.
Yeah, as we've dug in, we've had, we're, we're working on some tier one instruction there. There's a few teachers with really strong data, and then one that we're really working on that tier one, that co-teaching model. So looking to improve the instruction there is one that, that brought it down. And you can see too, our fifth grade and sixth grade are very different. So talking about teaming that way as well, more vertical alignment there and more conversations. So that's where our goal is too, of those stronger PLCs. I think we have a lot of work in there, the conversations we're having, pushing, challenging, being a group of learners. So we saw a dip, and we did see more of effort, less time on some in the spring than we did in the, in the winter too. So I think that had a bit of it as well, but then
Students took less time with that.
So that's, conversations then have been, how did you set up for success? What, what was the learning environment like? What was the conversation before? How did you set your kids up for success to take that, you know, as winter or as spring does kind of get crazy in the schedules, making sure that we focus in and, and set them up for success when they take it?
Maybe one follow-on to that then. And perhaps this is what I intended to get to with the first question, so they might have, I apologize if it was a poorly articulated first question.
No, that's okay.
How many VLP students did you welcome back into the, into the intermediate school in January?
Oh, gosh, I do not, I do not have that exact. I think we started with about 100. It was really even, like 53, 53, fifth and sixth. And I want to say we're maybe like, maybe half came back. Yeah, yeah. And it was nice too. We had a couple opportunities for them to come in for our tide week and our heartland week, and we had a ton come in. So that was really exciting too. I think they are ready to get back in and be with friends and in person, so.
Remind me, Sarah, was, were the VLP kids in your fall and winter data before they came back and once they came back after that second semester?
They would have been, yes.
They were in the initial, okay.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? All right, thanks.
Thanks, both of you.
Yeah.
Okay, I do want to start just quickly under six point two before we get into construction. I just want to make a comment on masks, because I'm starting to get a lot of emails on that. If you've not read the actual health order from the state, it very clearly states on the first page, it was kind of a stopgap. So the governor came out with the June 2nd date. The next day, the CDC came out with, you don't really need to wear it if you're vaccinated. And then they kind of came out with this modified order on the next day. The piece in there that affects us is it basically says anybody that's vaccinated doesn't need to wear a mask unless you're in a medical setting, assisted living. And then there's a specific paragraph about, about education. And it says in education, we need to follow the orders until June 2nd, which is, you know, we'll be out of school on June 2nd. So I'm getting a lot of people reaching out wanting kids to have masks off now for the last five days of school. We have tried to make some modifications in working with our health department so that kids are able to take them off at recess. They've also been able to take them, as Jen kind of alluded to earlier, off out at Field Day. So the general guideline being if they're by somebody for less than 15 minutes and they're outside, that they don't need to have those on. So in recess, when they're running around, obviously, they're not standing right beside the same person. Likewise, I know I got to see the seniors today on equal last flight, where they go around to all the elementaries and the intermediate school, and the little ones get to clap them through the building, and then they do some photos on the playgrounds. And so when they were up in the building, we had masks on. When they came out and did that picture and were around each other, it was less than 15 minutes. And so, again, for those health department guidelines, we're able to have those off. So we're trying to kind of compromise where we're able to, but the order clearly states that they still have to have them on through June 2nd in educational settings. So I know some of you are very, very anxious to have those off. Believe me, I understand. But we, we're down to tomorrow's Friday, and then we have three days, so four days left. So hang in there, and, and June 2nd will be here soon. Does the board have any questions on that?
The protocol, the same for the graduation?
For the graduation, and we've just sent this out to families, and this again, we're working with the health department. We were able to make some tweaks with the recent guidance that changed. So with the graduates, last year, we didn't have the graduates process in. They just came and went directly to their seat with that staggered seating. And so this year, they will be able to walk in without masks because they're not going to be 15 minutes beside anyone. They'll be about three feet apart. We do have them spaced out on the field. We are asking, so we had two choices initially, which was you could either space people six feet apart and no masks outside, or if they're closer than that, then we're asking them to wear masks. And so, obviously, as things are continuing to evolve, our big thing is that we want them to be on people as they're walking and moving to their seats. We ask that they're not six feet apart from somebody in another household, we would ask people to keep them on. Another big change this year is last year, Mark and I handed out all the diplomas. We had a table between us, our masks on, like the graduates have it off, but there was that six feet barrier. This year, in working with the health department, again, that same philosophy that we're using for recess, that with the staff presenter and graduate, they're only going to be by each other for probably less than a minute, quite frankly, as they hand the diploma. So we're asking if somebody's not related or in the same household, that we're not doing any contact, physical contact, hugs or anything. But thought it was really important for them to be able to get that photo without the masks. And so the presenter and the graduate will be able to, you know, present the diploma, get a picture, and then move on. We did send out to our presenter, so if we have any presenters who perhaps aren't vaccinated or aren't comfortable with that, that certainly they can still wear a mask and that we can work through that between them and the student if we want to do masks. And in that case, the graduate then would be able, as the presenter steps away, to take the mask off and get a photo with their diploma. So that was a big change from last year that we're really excited about. It's a reflection of the new guidance. Other than that, we are still doing the staggered seating, so we don't have the density Other than that, we are still doing the staggered seating, so we don't have the density coming in. That actually worked so well last year, we actually got a lot of compliments on that. I know some people like to get up there at 6:00 AM and mark their seats in the past, but it was so much smoother than last year with having those tickets and trying to coordinate it to where people sit. So, overall, you know, just ask for people's grace and patience as we work through that, but we're excited to be able to have graduation again. We were able to increase tickets from four to six for families and able to add in some, like I said, some things where the kids could, basically Jake will have to wear his mask the entire time, so.
We don't want to see him anyway.
Try to, try to make it about the kids, so that some of us have to if we're closer, but when they're out there, we set it up to where they shouldn't have to and still be within the protocols. We're excited about that.
I think last year, the family members didn't have, once they were seated, didn't have to-
Last year they were six feet apart, so we didn't make a big change.
The groups.
Yes.
Right.
So this year, and that's kind of what we went back and forth on because people want to-
Oh, you're not going to set them in family groups?
We are, but we can't get the family group six feet apart from another family group.
With the extra two tickets.
Correct.
Okay.
So we've maximized out our seating to do that, and they're still just a little close. So, you know, certainly at the end of the day, we're outside if people are vaccinated, we're asking them to wear masks at their seats, and then we're asking them, you know, if they're not, if they're within six feet of somebody else to leave it on.
But we're not going to hassle anybody.
Not going to be the mask police, but we are asking them to comply with the plan that we've worked out with the health department. Any other questions on that? All right. I'm not going to do a long construction update because this is certainly not my core type, but did want to share with you the monthly report as Doug was able to be here tonight. We are still unscheduled to be able to move next Christmas break and open the building in January, so kind of see what updates are happening. A big one will draw your attention in the middle is that the Central Energy Plant is now operational for the high school, so that's a big milestone that we've been wanting to get placed there. And then everything else, if you drive back there, and I know some of you, Lanny, you were able to go on a tour with our Eagle Examiner Group, it's just really moving along. Even since I've been in there, they now have treads on some of that learning staircase and everything's just really starting to take shape, and they're starting to get some work done out in the stadium area as well, so pretty exciting. Take a look at the other logs that we give you every month and please email if you have any questions because I will not be able to answer at a detail level right now and I'm going to pretend that I know that. Doug and I will certainly get back with you if you have any additional questions. All right, that is all I have this evening, and will ship any questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. That takes us to item seven, recognition, and I'm actually going to do the first one and call up Nathan Rens, our Student of the Month from Big Walnut Elementary School. So Nathan is a sixth grader at BWI, and it says he has two brothers, and he's one of the, you're off his sixth, and you never fight with them and you always get along, right?
Didn't even hesitate.
He's not a- Very honest, I'm thinking that somewhere in here. It says here that you like to read and you play a couple sports. What are your favorite sports? Soccer, and it also says you're a basketball player too. Okay, and what's your favorite subject in school? Math, and it says he's a number guy. And one of the things your family likes to do together is to play sports games, and you have a particular game you like to play the most?
Trek International.
Have you visited lots of national parks?
Yeah.
What's been your favorite one?
Yellowstone.
Yellowstone, okay. Are there other ones you've visited that you like too?
International.
Nice. Sounds like you guys get to do some free summer vacations. Do you have any fun plans for this summer?
We're going to go out there.
Good luck, hang on, I did that one. Never again. Well, we have some nice things from a couple teachers, and I saw that Mr. Fershall was here this evening, so we'll go ahead and read what Mr. Fershall had to say about you. Nathan Rens has been the epitome of what it means to be a quiet force for good in our class, but the ways in which he exemplifies our school's core values are never missed by good peers. It is a rare occasion when his classmates fail to acknowledge him in our discussions about responsibility, integrity, safety, and empathy. His work has been presented with superior levels of quality, and his respect for his classmates is due to the high level of respect that he has for himself. His classmates will be fortunate to have his leadership as a guide as they all move forward together into the future. And he says that this recognition is well deserved. And then we also have from Mrs. Ho, and she said Nathan is an outstanding young man and a wonderful student. He has a very quiet presence in our science class, but he is always attentive and provides meaningful insight into our class discussions. Something I admire about Nathan is how the quality of his work always reflects the critical thinking skills he has developed through the years. This young man loves to learn. Is that cool? I'd like to hear that. And Nathan has a very bright future ahead of him, there's no doubt. And one last one real quick, Mr. Wine said Nathan Rens is a dedicated hard-working student. He analyzes inferred and hypothesizes. He takes pride in his work, he is respectful, caring, a positive role model, and exhibits the qualities of pride. Wow, that's some pretty high praise from the teachers I know, who are really good teachers, so congratulations Nathan. We'll be talking. And when your family can step across the hallway and, Mrs. Y, I will take your pictures for our Eagle Examiner. Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
And while they're doing that, I'll invite Ms. Vera Chung to the front, please.
Vera says here, you're going to graduate Saturday? I use that joke all the time, and I hope you're smiling. I'm just joking. Vera is the fourth, is a fourth grader in the Student of the Month from Big Walnut Elementary. Vera says that you, if I read this paper, I see that you have a few siblings. Hank is in first grade, Van is two years old, and you have a sister named Edith that's coming to BEWE next year for kindergarten, is that right? That sounds very exciting. And I understand that you love to draw and lead. What's your favorite book? I don't have a favorite book. The books that you read do you like, right? I'm the same way, I totally agree with it. But I understand that you like realistic fiction the best. Might that be true? Okay, good, I probably got the right person. Favorite part about being at BEWE is that you love all the teachers. And actually, one thing that you're sad about is that you're leaving BEWE because of all the wonderful teachers, is that correct? Oh, that sounds wonderful. And as you continue to grow up, you want to do something that's involving art, right? What kind of art do you like? You like sketching? Okay, painting? Or just like sketching with a pencil and trouble? Pencil, that sounds good to me. And, so this is going to make me tear up a moment here, who do you look up to the most? You look up to your grandma, is that right? Yeah, because your grandma's been through a lot and she still loves you very much. And one thing about you that some people don't know is that you're allergic to dogs, but you have four dogs. It's crazy, very excited, I'm proud to be the BEWE Student of the Month, and I won't keep you up here much longer, I promise. I'm just saying a few things that some of your teachers say. Mrs. Dunlop, who is that? Your third grade teacher, she says Vera is very special, you have the heart of gold, she's a leader and a pioneer. I aspire, the teacher aspired for me more like you because of how patient and kind you are. Now here's what she said, she said, way to go, girlie. I'm so proud of you. I'm not sure if you said that right.
Did he sound like her?
Way to go. And the last thing I'll read is from Mrs. Norris, and these are qualities that I love. Great role model and a wonderful leader. You're creative, you give all your effort, you're persistent, and you like working in arts. And she also said, you're super kind. So on behalf of these folks here, I want to congratulate you for being the BEWE Student of the Month. I have this little token for you that you can put on your mantle right there next to mom and dad's picture or whatever else you want to do, okay, because that's yours. Congratulations. And the family can go with Ms. Chung and get your photo for the Eagle Examiner.
Thank you guys very much.
And our last recognition for tonight is Jake Raj. Jacob, my major.
Jacob, the crowd is dwindling.
I know. It's Jake. On behalf of the board, we would like to say thank you for attending meetings and keeping us updated on the high school. No offense to anybody else here, but quite frankly, your updates were usually the best, and we just appreciate, we know it takes a lot of time to tie your schedule, so thank you very much. And I heard you talking to Jeremy beforehand, I couldn't hear what you said. He asked you about favorite memories at Big Walnut, so if there's one you can share with the group, I would like to hear what your favorite memory is of your time here.
I think definitely homecoming, you know, high school, the whole weekend from football games to dance.
Great. Well, thank you very much, and on behalf of the board, congratulations, thank you. And best of luck getting a high state. Go watch. All right.
All right, well, we will see if we'll have our technology going. I have a little presentation update on the forecast, but to start off, just going over the monthly financial, really much the same. You will notice that the expenditure, positive variance decreased because we finally were able to get everything worked out with our medical carrier. Got a nice call today on thanking us for being patient with all of that, and I said we were holding your money. I appreciate you letting us hold the money for a little while, but we did get that paid, so you'll see that that did come down. But other than that, we are continuing to tend to trend slightly over in our revenue and under in expenditure, which bottom line adds for a positive ending balance compared to what we were expecting. And it kind of rolls right into, we'll talk a little bit more about how that trend is being updated and what that looks like in the five-year forecast, so. Any, I'll stop at the monthly first, any specific questions to that? Good. Is this up and running?
Yeah. All right, well, we're done.
If there's not anybody that has already exited and you want to, then I guess this is the time.
Giving you fair warning.
Or maybe prefer even to make a couple copies if anyone and I are going through the 400 exit proposal.
It's actually on the desk.
Oh, yes? Oh, that's even better.
Right there, the JJB.
There you go.
All right. I apologize for you over here, hopefully I'll, I will stand off to the side and maybe you can see an angle. Or if we're really lucky, the front one will get going.
Use that mouse.
I've got it here too, Wayne, I tried to be prepared. Be a little quicker.
There you go.
All right. So, as, generally when I put these together, I spend a lot of time in not only reflecting over the finances, but reflecting over the year. And I think back a year ago in the conversations we were having. The uncertainty that we were trying to work through, both academically and the finance side, I distinctly remember reading things even at the state level of feeling like it was a shot in the dark of what was it going to look like next month, what was it going to look like six months from now? And I remember conversations that we were having too about what, were we being too positive on some of the numbers? So with that, it is a, kind of a pleasure to be able to stand up here and say that it's better than we expected. So with that, in kind of talking about the uncertainties and everything, it's always important to remember that, what the forecast is. It is one of those things that we are preparing, it's required, but it really is a helpful tool in looking at and planning for our community, for our schools, looking at really the financial health of our school district, and it's, at no point in time we'll ever tell you, say that what you say, that what you see on the forecast will definitely, without a doubt, be where we're going to go and what it's going to be, because it is that snapshot in time, and we're using the best information we have, adjusting to reflect both the known things as well as trying to include realistic and thought-out assumptions and predictions of what's going to happen. So with that, here is where the current forecast looks. This is kind of the, probably the best slide when you think about what is the health of your district, looking at revenue trends, expenditure trends, and that green bar, because that green bar, by statute, we can't go below zero. And so when we start to see that, we continue to have to be working on what is our plan to either bring that up, keep it steady, either on the expenditure side or the revenue side. But we have been fortunate to see, and I'll kind of dig into some of the details on this, reflecting on both what we had in May and, or what we had in November and what we have in May, and some context behind what happened. So fortunately, we have seen our revenues come up more than we expected, and I think we've been talking about some of those pieces throughout the months. But when we still are seeing on the horizon, a, getting into the negative area in that estimated 24-25 range, and our specific policy says that if we are in a, under 30 days in the third year, then we need to be preparing that plan and thinking about, fortunately here, with what has changed, we are above that 30 days. However, a good practice, something that we talked about as what we're going to try to strive for, is having a 60-day cash balance. It comes into both our bond rating, that's something that they like to see, a nice positive, we'll call it a rainy day fund, I think we've talked about that before, that our cash balance is a rainy day fund. So they like to see that, and it is a good practice to be able to have a 60 days or two months of operating capital in case something were to happen. So, big picture, when we look at both the May and the November, we do see a good swing in that third year, bringing it up above the 30-day. Almost, we're getting close to even a 60-day balance in that third year, but it still has a negative balance in our 24-25. But happy to say, if you look in the first year, that difference both on the revenue expenditure side, that we have, we have definitely gotten better. And what we'll kind of talk about in some of these various pieces of why that happened is that it's kind of a story of a lot of little things make a big difference. So, this is a common one that we see, just kind of pointing out what our different revenue sources are. As we see here, 70, about 78% is all local. Three-quarters of that are in our income tax, public utility, personal property, and our real estate. And that is, I don't anticipate that changing in when we talk about state funding and those pieces. Um- So I've specifically pulled out four different revenue areas. Not surprisingly are those the big ones that we just talked about, as well as the state funding. And when we look at the property taxes, just a quick note, you'll see a lot of positive in some of these, but the first year here, our fiscal year '21, do see a little bit less, as we've talked about already in other months. When I dug into that, we are starting to see a change in the split of when we collect our funds. So we get two big payments, one in about February, March, and another in July, August. And historically, we were at about 52% collection in the beginning of the year, so that February, March timeframe, and 48% the other half. When we had tax change a couple of years ago, it went up and then it's kind of fluctuated a little bit. But we've gradually started to see it move a little bit closer to 51% now at the beginning of the year compared to that 52. So saw another little shift this year where it looks like our trend is moving down from, I think it was 51 and a half last year, 51 this year. And that causes a difference in when we're trying to project out the collection cycle. So that, along with delinquencies being a little bit less this year, have caused that negative for that in this year. However, throughout the life of what we'll call the forecast, the five-year period, we are anticipating residential and commercial growth. I think we see that in our area, do anticipate that continuing. And as another piece, as you know, every three years we have an update or an appraisal in the forecast that has also worked in. We've seen double digits. I'm not anticipating that that will continue, but anticipating that we will hopefully continue to see real estate prices stay where they're at and continue to go up and have worked that in. Another piece is the public utility, personal property. Again, I know I've said this many times over the years, but that's, a lot of that is our AEP substation in our district, provides many funds for us and we're fortunate to have that. However, there is a depreciation factor. As the equipment gets older, the way that personal property is, is depreciated. We've been told that's supposed to be a 3% to 3.5% each year. However, that's being offset and with new development and the infrastructure that's put in there. And we fortunately saw about a million-dollar increase this year instead of a decrease. However, I think it's still prudent to be planning on that because we don't know that the 3.5%, 3% to 3.5% depreciation will still be outmatched by the residential development. Income tax, the next two are really the two that have been the most up and down, the most questions. And the kind of the financial roller coaster we've been riding would come with our income tax. And happy to be able to report, and I think I shared this maybe last month too, is that we saw that the decrease was only about a quarter of a percent and we had been planning on a negative 4%. Interestingly enough though, I just looked at the state income tax. It's down and it's about 3.5%. So our community may be faring a little bit better than the state, but I think that 4% decrease was at least a realistic when we look at the state as a whole. What has been worked in here is, and you'll see that we benefit in the first year, but that also becomes a benefit in when we think about the growth on that base. That also becomes a benefit in future years as well. And anticipate as we grow that we will continue to see that to rise with new families that come into our community. So finally, on the revenue side, this has been, I know, a big up and down. And if we again go back to, it was almost a year ago to the date that we found out that we were being cut by over $900,000. Fortunate enough to get about 350 of that back, but we started the year down that about $550,000 to $600,000. Not knowing until February that we were going to be getting some of those funds back. That's another thing reflected in the November forecast that has changed and ultimately helped us, that we do anticipate getting all of those funds back at the start of the next fiscal year to bring us back to the fiscal year '19 levels. However, we got about $300,000 more in February. That still left us being cut this year by about a quarter of a million dollars compared to what we would have originally hoped to be getting in our basic funding. But that has helped us significantly over the forecast period. Not planning on any significant increases. We don't have any real good information on what the funding formula is going to be, if there will be a funding formula. So at this point in time, what has been updated in the forecast going out is basically holding us at the fiscal year '19 levels, which was in the governor's budget, and not including really any increases from there. So here you see that we do anticipate our revenues as a whole continuing to increase due to the various pieces that we were just talking about. The income tax, property taxes increasing, but not anticipating any significant help from the state at this point in time. As we move in then to the expenditure side, we are a service industry. So a lot of our costs, most of our costs go to people, salaries, benefits, and even the second largest or third largest area in our budget being the services. That too provides some level of supports that we contract for, speech, some tutoring, and other services like that that do help our students. So a couple of big areas then to talk about here are our personal services or our salaries and wages. And as we've continued to see on those monthly reports, slightly under what we had anticipated. And where that can come into is that sometimes you have staffing put into our budget and either we can't hire somebody right away or we end up seeing that that position is not needed at the very moment, so we wait to actually make that hire. So adjusting those pieces for what we're seeing for trend. In addition, our teachers' union, as we, I think it was last month, approved an extension on that contract. That has been worked into our model. As well as on the agenda tonight is a contract extension for a year with our support group, BWPSS. And that too has been worked into the forecast, which has kind of helped us to be able to stretch our dollars and be able to really make it buy a little longer. Other piece in here, and it was a question last week regarding our ESAR dollars, ESAR round three, and I'll have another slide specifically, we'll talk about that just a little bit. But in this, in our current May model, it does include the ESAR round one, which we received back in March of last year. That had been planned to help with some positions, some of the protective equipment, sanitizing for our buildings, a lot of things like that, along with what I had mentioned earlier with the coronavirus relief funds. But that has helped in some offset to our general fund as well. As well as part of our plan, again, remembering that we were cut quite a bit and with ESAR round two, that kind of helped to bridge the gap of the state funding that we were cut. So planning on using that for offsetting some general fund positions to help our overall position. So all those pieces kind of roll into why we're looking better on the wages area. A lot of our benefit side is also salary-driven. We've got retirement, that is a percentage of wages, and other pieces like that. So naturally, when you see a decrease in your wages, you will see some decrease as well. We had some one-time credits from our insurance. Also then some different pieces with the ESAR dollars. And I think as well, what we're seeing a slight trend under consistently are starting to get our medical plan under control and being on a little better path than what we have been in the future. Then finally, the only reason I, it's kind of a wash in the years out of the, from this current fiscal year, but have seen a significant trend under, which has impacted this year. And a lot of the changes here are just in kind of timing of, in conversations with the board on that 10-year plan, but specifically the five-year that are being put into this forecast. Moving up some specific initiatives or changing some to go back to be able to provide nursing maybe a little earlier and counseling, which some of those positions are a purchase services and some of those are payroll. So a lot of what you're seeing, those changes in the out-years is due to some of the items that the board had set in February to put a little more focus on, that brought some funds out of the purchase service area and into more of a wage-payroll area. So continuing to see that with enrollment inflation, that our costs are anticipated to increase. However, we are, I think, over the last years, we have proven that we're watching those costs, trying to save where we can so that we're keeping the costs as down as much as we can. However, again, that can only go so long and not have to be cutting things or not putting things in that we would like to see. So again, looking at then the ending balance, the true cash. Our rainy day fund at this point in time is at a good point. But as we go out, we can see that that is lower in the fiscal year '23 than we would like to see. And then once you get down on that downward curve, it can really go quickly. So again, something that we need to be monitoring. So with, and I should note, and I think we mentioned this last week, all of these, the pieces, the application has not even come out yet. We've just started the process for the round three. So those pieces have not been worked into the May forecast. They will be part of the November forecast. But I thought it was important to note, just give you an understanding quickly of what those are to be used for. So specifically, there is a reserve of 20%. And we're being told that, you know, the intention is to make sure that we're covering learning loss, that we're covering the social-emotional health of our students as we're coming out of a pandemic, that the needs are great. Now, I think we at Big Walnut have a good story to tell, that we've been able to be in person, that we've been able to continue with our educational model. And I'm hopeful, I think some of the data we saw tonight is showing that we continue to see growth and we're not seeing hopefully those same learning losses that other schools may be seeing. But that's what these are intended to be used for. I had a conversation with the grants coordinator this morning, kind of talking through some of the things that we were maybe going to be doing with it, and I'll get to that in just a second. As I'm kind of finishing up on these, I'll go on to the next slide and you can see some of the other things that it can specifically be used for. But as we were talking, and it's neat to hear in practice, how our model of meeting the student where they're at, being, personalizing our instruction, are a lot of the concepts that ODE is wanting and trying to have people do to be able to bring up that learning loss. So kudos to us for already being, we're already doing those things pre-pandemic that they're hoping that others will be doing to bring students up to the standard that they're hoping them to be at. So when I look through those different things, as well as, we put out earlier in the year, the governor asked the school districts to put out an in-person, what's our plan? So our extended learning plan, learning recovery plan, as well as our 10-year staffing plan has tutors in it, has a psychologist, a school counselor, behavior specialist, nurses. And those are all pieces that also fit into that social-emotional, the learning loss, all those pieces. So feel comfortable in saying that it would be very appropriate as we are using these dollars, trying to be prudent in stretching it over the period that we're able to use these funds, which would be next year and then the two years after it. And that's kind of what we've thought. And that helps with not having a big, as big of a financial cliff also when it comes to what dollars we're using from the general fund in that planning process. So what is the impact then on the bottom line? As you can see here, going back to that true cash days balance and using about $500,000 approximately each year. So compounding each year, the impact then on our bottom line when we get out to 2024 is $1.5 million. If you recall, the negative was a little over a million. So it puts us just into the positive, hopefully in 2024, when we look at those ESAR dollars being used. So as I close out, just continuing to think about our planning process, thinking about that as we grow as a community, that there's a lot of work to do for all of us to be communicating what does growth do? What are the impacts of growth? Working with our townships and villages the best we can to be able to work towards smart growth. And trying to plan out the supports we want for our students as we grow, the staffing that's needed for support, as well as the growth in our district. And as I mentioned earlier, not being down on the state, they view us as a wealthier district. And that means that we don't get the same funds as some other districts. So it kind of is the reality, not that I like it, but it is the reality that we're living with right now. So not planning on significant help from the state from that standpoint. But we've got planning, we've got monitoring, and I think as a district and a community, we've got work to do to continue to make sure that we're giving our community and our students the education that they need. So with that, I'm going to stop. Thank you for listening to me. Hopefully, this hit on some of the questions we had last week, as well as gives you kind of a good feel for where we were and where we've come. So questions? Okay.
I'll start up.
Yeah, go for it.
On the five-year forecast, am I reading it correct that the expenditures in '18, '19, '20, and '21 total about $4.4 million?
Say that again, Mr. Crowe.
The expenditures, the difference between 2018 and 2021. The expenditures, the difference between 2018 and 2021, the increase is about 4.4 mil roughly.
From 18 to 19, it looks like, it's actually about 3 million.
From 18 to 21?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes.
Cause we're in 21.
Yes, correct.
Okay. And the increase between 21 and 22 is 3.1 or 2 million?
That would be, it would be, let's see, 3, about 3.3, 3.4?
So over four years, we had an, we had an increase of 4 point something.
Correct.
And in one year, you're anticipating an increase of 3 point something.
That is correct.
Are those positions?
That is positions, yeah.
So we're gonna take the 83% of every dollar and increase that expenditure. Do you know what percentage, can you forecast what percentage? If you, if we go with the five-year budget, what percentage of every dollar will be for benefits and wages? Cause it's gonna increase that 83%.
Well, in, we stay pretty consistent with around the 83% throughout the, the forecast. Cause I kind of, I kind of watched that trend as well. If we look at salaries and benefits, we're also though increasing in our purchase services and supplies anticipating both with inflation, as well as some of the positions that we talked about for, let's see, behavior specialists, nursing, I think we have a nursing ad next year. Those are also purchase services. So it, it really stays around the 83%. I mean, I can, I can get you exact numbers, what I'm seeing if you'd like, but I don't have that right now.
Not driving that up.
No.
In our previous conversations, the object should be to attempt to bring that down.
I can understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Bring down the percentage of staffing?
No, bring down the cost. It would bring down the staffing because you're bringing down the percentage, pardon?
I'm sorry, was that what you were saying? I just was asking for clarification.
83 cents out of every dollar goes to wages and salaries.
Right.
It's the.
You said our goal should be to bring that down?
Yes.
And you're saying, you're saying a percentage of total?
Yeah.
I will say that it usually is a little higher too for districts that have like a PI fund because that's not rolled into the, the five-year forecast. So if you look at your, just saying in general, I'm not comparing ourselves to Owen Tangi cause I do think we're far superior to them. But, but I think it's pretty common to, if you, if you look at some of the districts around the area, that it does creep into the 80s. We're, we're not unique in that. And when it comes to, I think if we look back and we're, some of the years we were spending to improve our facilities from the general fund, that also adds more to non-payroll costs that it, that it does then drive up, when, when we remove that and we're not accounting for it in the five-year forecast, it will then bring up the, the percentage that we're paying for salaries and benefits. So I, I understand what you're saying, but there's, I think there's a lot that goes into it too if we're purely just looking at trying to bring down that percentage.
Well, my cautionary on it is the fact that when I came on this board.
Yeah.
That was about 78%, which was just three and a half years.
I can neither confirm or deny that, but I'll trust you on that right now.
Just to go back to Jeremy's point, when you got elected, was right when the PI got passed? The permanent improvement levy? So that shifted some of our general operational expenses that we were spending on capital out of the operating fund and over to the PI.
Well, we hadn't collected those funds yet, but I'm.
Well, I'm just saying, general timeline.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you.
Also, under 8.1, you have information about levy discussion and the information that Jeremy provided. Based on my question the other day and the question, the request, I was pretty pleased that Mr. Bucci had asked about. Any other questions or discussions?
I guess if, I'll actually ask you guys if there are any other questions. I know we, we discussed it last week and just, we're at the point that if we, we were going to go in the fall, that we would have to be passing those resolutions in the next couple of board meetings. So wanted to make sure it was another kind of point on the agenda to make sure that we were, we were acting in the wish of the board, so.
I appreciate you providing information and including in there kind of some of the changes that we had discussed. I guess share with word, a conversation that I had with some folks from the community after our meeting, just that some strong concern from folks who are typically pretty big supporters of the district regarding possibly going on the ballot in November, coming right out of a pandemic. And I guess kind of hearing from those folks and then seeing this information from Jeremy and kind of talking about, okay, do these federal funds ultimately Band-Aid us enough to get us through, but allowing us to add the kind of supports that we've talked about as being important for our students? That can we kind of pull this off and hold on until a May election? But knowing that at that point, that we're gonna need those funds if we're gonna continue the type of supports that we're putting in place for this coming school year. And at that point, knowing that it's a situation where we would have to pass something in May.
Yeah, I think as we looked, and I know Jeremy provided that, but being able to take and he had on the slide, some of those whole child supports that we talked about in terms of counselors, mental health specialists, nursing areas that I know we've already discussed as a team that we're very behind in. Being able to take those out of that ESAR 3 money and actually some of the ESAR 2 money as well, is definitely a Band-Aid. Obviously, they're not repeating funds. So that would be something we would need to look at securing funding for if those are important services that we would want to continue to provide and continue to increase for kids.
I'm trying to figure out how to frame it in my mind.
Sorry, I don't wanna rush.
I suppose that, that my first thought relative to what you just shared in reference to community members and fatigue, I might actually come back to something Jeremy said in his presentation around, I think we at Big Walnut have a pretty solid story to share. And that story definitely has a half-life. Like, well, it's been a year of extraordinary and there's general support and appreciation for, I don't even wanna say general, I'm actually a little frustrated. There, there should be extreme support and appreciation for the Herculean efforts of this district during this past year. But that support has a half-life from the standpoint that I don't know that it stays around or that story can be, that can continue to have the same resonance a year from now. Because that's what we're really talking about. If, if there's a need, then it would seem like stepping into the batter's box as early as possible to articulate that need and make a case for it is important. If we're going to, if we as a board feel like there's satisfaction in continuing to Band-Aid things based on again, ESAR funds or additional funding, then it, it could be perceived as, well, pass it now or else kind of, and that's not even what I mean. I mean that we would lose a shot at putting something on the ballot if we weren't thinking about doing it now. And if that millage were to potentially go up in May versus in November, that would also seem like not necessarily the most responsible thing to do on behalf of the taxpayer if that were our concern. Not that there's been kind of any kind of decision on that. I'm just wondering if we have a compelling story to tell. I'm always in favor of let's tell it, tell it now and let people decide on whether they find it to be compelling or not.
I appreciate all the, the extra work that Jeremy put into providing us different scenarios and then adjusting those scenarios further. When additional questions came up, it's definitely a lot to take in. I mean, obviously the, the extra funds help and they can get us to a point where, you know, we're not going below zero quite as early as we are. But, you know, I think, I think we're starting a little bit behind as we have a lot of positions to make up, to really provide the type of services to our students. So it's, it's a lot to kind of think about and try to determine what the best approach is.
So at this point, do we need to?
Yeah, what is it?
Let you know that yes, for June meeting, we're looking at a resolution? And would that need to be that first June meeting or could it be the second June meeting?
I forgot my timeline from Bricker and Eckler. What, what did that, and usually, you know, I bring, I have my stack-o stuff. And what is it there?
For June meeting for later, but I believe it's okay.
An emergency levy?
That's all.
Sorry. August 4. The filing deadline.
So we have, this is a reminder, we have to do the two resolutions because we have to certify the college. So we would need to pass something in June, something in June. If one of the two. Office, come back, pass in July and then file by August.
Thank you for it.
Do we just have one meeting in June?
We have two in June.
But remember, they're, they're flipped off because of year-end closing. So we have the evening meeting at its regular time and then we have a morning meeting the following week.
So what other, is there other conversation necessary, Jeremy, in order for us to satisfy what you asked?
I think it's, if there is more information you guys need to, to come to that decision, what you, there's, there's a, there's a lot that goes into it and I, I do understand that. I mean, the, the financial picture, I'd always, I'd always, as the finance guy, would like the funds sooner than later. But there are a lot of pieces that, that go into that. I think a, a fall would be, it would be beneficial because then we start collecting that in the next fiscal year, or we would start collecting it next fiscal year. In a spring or even fall the next year, we don't collect it until, so it, it becomes a, a challenging planning piece then in the, in the spring. But I, I think with the changes we've made, with the more positive outlook, we can, we can go in the spring and I think we would be okay, just.
I think that is the other, the other component to your presentation that I found to be very pleasing is the standpoint that, as you pointed out a year ago, we were looking at almost a million dollars that was recouped by the state of Ohio versus what we thought was going to be positive ending balance for us. And to see that we are still in a solid financial setting even now, given that is, is I think, I think a strength of actions taken to date.
Just a reminder, some of those actions where we were able to absorb some positions. The biggest hit, you know, we've talked about it before, is our academics. So we, the instructional coaches, as we move forward, you know, that's where we had the discussion that we don't wanna do that over the long term. So I think we were able, we use the word Band-Aid, but part of that Band-Aid was not having some of the instructional support that we need. So I certainly agree and I think that with the ESAR funds and with the cuts that we made in the short term, I think we can make it through until spring. We just have to be very clear on our messaging that at that point, if we want to continue what we have and be able to put in those mental health supports and behavioral supports, then we would have to have additional revenue to be able to do that.
Have we as a district, I should ask Jeremy, should, have we as a district passed on the first timeout frequently? What is that kind of batting ratio?
Don't, we, we looked at that a couple of years ago and I cannot recall that we have passed on the first time.
Passed new money or renewals?
Correct.
Renewals we have.
Renewals, yes.
Last two renewals we have, we have not asked for new money since spring of 2010. I'm sorry, that was the last time we passed new money, but that was the third ask at that time. And then with the bond issue, it took two attempts.
So just to the point that you were making about spring, if we had a track record of first-time passages, I would feel pretty comfortable with that. If it were, we don't have that track record in term, now, again, 11 years of, of gap time before we could really tell that, but prior to that, we didn't have a great track record with that.
Right.
So that makes me nervous. And then the messaging of how that might, might come out also makes me nervous.
We have had about 33% for that time. So we have had a lot of new families move into the district, many four, four schools. So I'm not sure where that demographic may have shifted a little bit, but certainly agree that it's, it's not been an easy first timeout over the years.
Jeremy, would it be difficult to figure out the impact of waiting till spring and then not have it pass in May?
So.
Because it will have an impact.
The, I think that would be a, a conversation that Angie and Mark and I would have to have. What, what does staffing look like? I think if it does not pass in May, I think we need to continue a cautious approach to what are, what are ads and what are not. Because what is, what is included currently are the increases based on our, our goals that we have talked about throughout this year. So we would have to, I think, probably be very specific on what, what pieces are not implemented, knowing that we, we would be supporting some of those over a two to three-year period with, with ESAR dollars. So those ones we could continue to probably provide. So what, what impacts, we can, we can look at that, yes.
I think from my lens, and quick and easy answer to that is we would be back where we've been, which is we're only adding classroom teachers for growth and not continuing to offer enough electives or offering those other supports. So I think it's, it's where we've been. We have 150 kids come in, divide that roughly by 25-ish and that's about 100 classroom teachers we should have to add. So it would be trying to struggle to maintain that, but it wouldn't be able to add any additional programming, any additional courses, any additional mental health supports. Probably what that would look like, other than the ones that we can sustain for two or three years with ESAR dollars.
Mr. Crowe, I think that's a fascinating question. Can you shed a little bit of light for me on, on maybe why you asked that?
Well, some of the positions that were explained several weeks ago are, like the nurses and those, are gonna be filled before May. Now, some of that's grant?
Yeah, some of those, some of those would be grant dollars.
Are all of them grant?
Well, the, the ones for this year, is that, are you talking this year?
Well, we've, we've already, the grant ran out. Well, we've ar- we've already, the grant ran out on the mental health, didn't it, for Mr. Plumber?
We have some carryover that I think we can cover one more year specifically for those positions that we, um, that we've been paying with the student wellness and success dollars, I think is what you, you're mentioning. Um, we've also, in part of, we've, we've been projecting out all along, continuing to try to provide those positions from the general fund. So that has been a switchback in, um.
That's covered right now with grant money.
It, it is currently covered with grant money, yes.
And Doug, the reason I thought maybe you were asking that question was relative to the ESAR round three grant dollars that I think Jeremy shared might, would expire, have to be spent by September of '23?
'24.
Twenty, oh, sorry, '24.
Yeah.
Uh, and I thought that might be the, the purpose of the question.
No, the, if there's a need, then why wait is, if, if you're waiting for any other reason, then I, I can't say this correctly. If the need is there, then it should be on the ballot. If it's not, at the earliest opportunity. If you're, if you aren't putting it on the ballot, then there's a political motive for not putting it on the ballot.
Could I respond to that? I think what we're looking at is the need is absolutely there in the forecast. It's just for determining at what point are you comfortable with addressing the need. So we're saying we can Band-Aid at our current staffing and adding some of the staffing with ESAR funds. But knowing that we're running out of money in '23, we're dipping into our savings. This is back to the conversation we've had all year long. So we could dip into our savings and survive and wait if we think that's a better move based on some feedback that we've gotten. Or we can go on now, knowing the need is absolutely there.
We've been dipping into our savings for the last three years.
We actually have not, have we?
In, I could say in a sense we have because we've, because we've been continuing to pull back. We, we've been adjusting and, and making changes.
We've cut services, not dipped into savings.
Correct. That has, that, that has put off that dipping in.
So when we see where we've had a projection that we need to dip into it, we've said, okay, so-and-so's retiring. Can we absorb that position for a year to not dip into our savings? That's how we've been operating. So yes, we, we need the money if we want to provide the services that we've all agreed that we think we need to provide.
Well, maybe I wasn't clear. For three years, when the, uh, budget comes up to be voted on, I have voted no. I've explained that because it's nevenu- negative revenue spending. In other words, the budget was more than the revenue.
And the budget was more than the actual expenditure. So when we budget in areas like, hey, we think we need this much for diesel fuel, for example, we usually budget a little more in case diesel spikes, for example, and when it's left, it rolls back into the fund. So what we've done is we, we've budgeted based on the needs that we've discussed with our principals and, and our directors. And then they've done an awesome job of really trying to be conservative, ordering the minimal amount of paper they can, for example. And then whatever money has been budgeted goes back in. We budget for a certain level of salary for an employee. And so Mark oversees that. And when we hire people, if we are able to hire a newer, less experienced teacher, for example, on the salary schedule, we budget it up here, but the actual is lower because we got somebody instead of a master, step five, maybe we got a bachelor, step two. So that's, and Jeremy, feel free to add to that, but that's, I think, the difference. And what you're seeing comes out in the budget before we know some of those actual numbers and then what the actual number. So then we're working constantly throughout the year to try to keep that so that we don't have to dip into the savings.
I'll have to look at that.
But, but the, the trend, if, if we go back to the first kind of comments on the forecast, is it's looking at the financial health. And that trend continues to be looming. And to, to Angie's point, we continue to try to be doing things to make sure that, that we're delaying that. But the, the need continues to, to be there.
I think the thing that I would echo that member Crowe said, that I can, I feel confident that I agree with is if the need is there, let's make the case and, and attempt to see where that falls and continue to articulate the need, uh, based on that. If we are a district that has proven its ability to do more with less, um, I'd like to see what we can do with what's appropriate. So, and, and I don't, I don't mean that in any kind of sarcastic manner. I mean that.
I agree.
It seems like the, every presentation in one way or another starts with, based on our forecast and what we're able to do at this time. And I recognize that there's a student impact on those conversations. So while I'm not totally sure about the, the choice to wait being a political choice, uh, I can certainly understand or support if the need is real, the attempt to articulate such a need. So to that end, what has to happen then in June for all board members to be able to weigh in or, or decide such an opportunity?
We would want to craft a resolution and put on the agenda for you to discuss and then vote on. To go on in November.
And I will, I, I think that one of the things that Jeremy said that I'll latch on to is the fact that there is a compelling story to tell. And it's up to others whether or not they find it to be compelling or not, or whether we can make the case that it's compelling.
And at that point, if, if we're looking to do that, Jeremy, will the mileage that we are, because I know you remodeled kind of at a 6.99, um, based on questions? Or are you gonna, are you gonna feel more comfortable with a 7.99 that we've also discussed, or is there, is there somewhere in there where you feel like we're gonna be able to fund the kind of, the, the programs that we've talked about, provide what we need to our students? And look at then making the case then in November to make that ask of our students?
The, the 6.99 that I provided earlier in the week, um, that, that puts us at that 45 days kind of.
Versus the 60 day.
Versus the 60 days. So if that is, um, if that's the comfort level, then, um, then that would probably be around where, where we would go.
The other question that I have, now that we're starting to, to clearly go down this lane, is one of, it, this would be November of '21. This would be a solid 10 years that this district, it, it's always an educational process, right? This will be a solid 10 years, 11 years before collection that we would have gone without an ask of new money. We have asked for continuing or we have asked for renewals. We have also asked for a bond in that period of time. But we have not asked for new money in terms of operations.
That is correct.
I, it would help me, and if this isn't by June, I certainly understand, again, this is May and there's a saying about the 100 days of May because, uh, everybody's kind of got different agendas this month as it relates to the end of school. Certainly Jacob has his. Everybody has their own thing going right now. Uh, but what would help me also is the idea of comparables. What does it, what has it looked like to go 10, then 11 years without new money? Who else has done that? To what degree? Those types of things.
I think it would help also put the rule up with that. We're at about 33% with June at home at that time.
We, we, uh, it's not completely up to date, but we looked at something with that that I can probably get around fairly quickly, quickly, Mr. Fuji. I think it was in 2018. So I can, I can pull that out at least. Um, and it, it provides kind of a history of, uh, some, some other districts in our area as well as us.
Thank you.
Jeremy, at the 6.99 that you figured, what dollar amount levy is that?
For, to an individual, 100,000 or I guess, or just?
What's it gonna generate?
I think it's just.
Is it on there? That was the wrong type issue, not something else.
Um, give me just a second, Mr. Crowe. Um, I believe that's right around eight to eight and a half million.
That's a 6.99?
Correct.
That doesn't seem right. We're at a billion valuation. Oh, okay. Never mind.
See if I can get this.
We've been right now at about a mils a million, but as we kind of move, the valuation moves up from nine and that'll generate a little bit more than a million.
It's compounding, right? So the other bottom line here is we have from now until June to either have conversations with others, to further inquire with you, or to come to some sort of understanding ourselves about what this means. And we're still on the right timeline if we do that.
That is correct. Yeah, we would, we would need to make a decision in June to be able to pass that and then be able to then pass the second resolution in July.
Since we're short one member this evening, are we, I guess, are you comfortable if we have that discussion at what would be the first meeting of the month? Would be evening, then potential of?
June 10th and then June 17th.
That's up to you. I don't know if you, typically, we don't make those big decisions at morning meetings. But, but certainly I think if you talk about it enough in the evening that you're planning to do it, that would probably.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm with Sherry here for a second. I think you're gonna say something.
Oh, about the board meeting?
Yeah.
Like, they're not, that doesn't line up with what it says on here. This says the 17th is the morning meeting and the 24th is the evening meeting. So I don't know if it's wrong on the agenda or if.
I believe it is. I believe it would be wrong in the agenda then.
Okay. So June 17th is the evening meeting? Yes. At 6:30?
Yes, apologies, I'm trying to turn it on.
And then the 24th is the morning. And just to note, the website says 6:25, I believe, instead of 6:24.
And the website doesn't have our last meeting on there at all.
Get that corrected.
Sorry. Jeremy, can I ask a quick question about the moving to 45 days? I know you said that, you know, that, that impacts our bond rating. By, by that point in time, will all bonds have been issued? Is that really a problem for us if our bond rating is impacted? Does that, does that prevent us from refunding? Like we recently were able to do to save some money? How, how does that play into it?
Yeah, um, they are specifically looking, it, I'll answer in two ways. It could have a long-term effect. I would not necessarily see it having a short-term effect because of where we're at financially. In the first couple of years, uh, they rely heavily on our, our audited financial report in doing those calculations. And just looking at the fiscal year '22, '23, we're, we still have a, a decent cash balance. However, if the trend continues, yes, it could have a long-term effect, um, on our, our credit rating, which then does impact the, um, not necessarily the potential to refund, but the rates that we would get on that refunding. But we have, we have already issued our, our debt, so the, the current situation, it, it shouldn't impact us.
And then this is all based on, I mean, just what we know of the money we receive from the state, which to some extent, you never know.
Right.
We know that if the new school funding does pass, that really doesn't benefit us. It doesn't necessarily hurt us, but it's not providing us more. And then I think seeing from the trend that Ohio and, uh, the current governor and, you know, potentially future, um, what, what the interest is in, it seems to be, um, cutting taxes for individuals and, and business owners in Ohio. That, that's been a trend over the last few years. So I, I wouldn't suspect that we would receive more money from the state. And, and I think too, that's, that's one thing, you know, being, being in, in tax that, that I've always kind of noticed. And I don't know if people necessarily think about it that way, but, you know, we, we pay taxes to different jurisdictions, federal, state, local. If federal taxes are going down or state taxes are going down, somebody has to pay for everything. And so that means it's going down to local taxpayers. Um, now, that does mean that local has more control, which can be beneficial and people like that. But that's just another way to look at, you know, kind of, kind of the world and, and where things are going. If you're, if you're paying less taxes here and less taxes here, maybe you will be paying more taxes here. So just another thing to consider in, in the mix.
Anything else for Jeremy, the levy discussion?
I believe we just turned this page. I apologize for the mix-up on there, but, um, are you wanting, the first one is the evening, second one's morning. Are you wanting more discussion then on the evening and to take a vote on the morning if that's the direction you go? Or do you want us to prepare a resolution for the evening meeting on June 17th?
I certainly don't know that we've given you enough guidance to, to provide a, uh, resolution in the first meeting of the month, unless it were to require a special board meeting between now and then, which I'm not necessarily opposed to. But at, at the same time, I don't hear that as the need. And we certainly are able, even though we haven't, it hasn't necessarily been the tradition of this board to have items of, uh, of business up for voting in the morning meetings. It's, it is an opportunity to do so anyway.
Again, I think the only messages, especially during that evening meeting, some people were aware that we're trying to be very transparent and take extra time to talk about it, not to try to be.
Jeremy, I do appreciate those, those forecasts that you provided with the additional information we requested. Thank you.
And to answer your, your question from earlier, Mr. Crowe, it looks like at, um, what we would anticipate our, our assessed valuation to be at a 6.99 would be around $7.8 million. So just a little, little under 8 million.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no further questions for Jeremy or Angie on that, we'll move forward with, um, discussion at the next meeting and final decision and possibly resolution at that last morning meeting in June. Item nine, select board policy, item nine. Um, item 10, board members, board members, items of interest. Jeremy, would you like, or Jake, sorry.
Not a whole lot going on at the high school here. Seniors have just finished up exams and, uh, I believe starting tomorrow, the rest of the underclassmen begin theirs. And of course, graduation is Saturday, which is very, very exciting. Um, but that's all that's going on. I've just, I would like to say thank you to all district administration because I know lots of schools around us did not have the opportunity to be in person all year. And I have talked to other seniors from around the country that are also going to Ohio State. And, um, some of them were even worse than schools around us. They, I'm very thankful that we had the chance to be, I got to be at desk all, from the first day of school to the last day of school. So that was fantastic. And then I would just like to say thanks to everybody for having me here. It's been a great time. I've learned some stuff and, uh, it's good.
Maybe someday you'll run for, for school.
Maybe.
Jeremy, anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of echo, um, Brad's column a little bit in the Eagle Examiner. You know, last year, being a first-time school board member, I wouldn't have thought that we would, yeah, enter a global pandemic and start making some of the decisions that we had to. Um, it's been interesting. It's been kind of wild. And when we started school last year, I think we all were like, okay, let's see how long we can make this work. And the fact that we made it through the whole year is fantastic. You know, we.
And the fact that we made it through the whole year is fantastic. You know, we, you know, there were, there were some bumps along the way, but I think, you know, we, we got through it. And, and I think it's, it's been very good for, for our community and for our, our learners here. So a big thank you to all of the staff and, you know, everyone with, with the schools. All the administrators have worked very hard to put everything together and, and get through all of these interesting times and, and try to make our students have, have a great experience. I know it hasn't been a typical year. Not everything, you know, that everyone hasn't been able to, all the students haven't been able to experience everything they normally would. But I think it, it's, it's been, you know, been pretty great for everybody. So big thank you to everybody, admin, teachers, staff, everybody, you know, bus drivers, I mean, janitors, everybody who worked so hard to, to make this school year happen. A big thank you.
Yep. I've stayed quiet on many of these discussions. Not so tonight. I can't speak for the rest of you, but in the last two and a half months, I've received more emails, more texts, and more face-to-face conversations with parents of the district who are concerned with CRT being in the school systems. I did a lot of research on the subject, only to find out that there was a resolution passed last July by the State Board of Education, which I find to be racist myself, but that's just me. I found it in the school board, the, the SOBA. As a matter of fact, two weeks ago, the chairman of the SOBA, or OSBA, sorry, resigned over that very subject because he wouldn't coalesce with the rest of the board members. It's a topic that's gonna have to be discussed, not tonight, but at some point in the very near future, or should be. And if any of you want a copy of what I've got, I can give it to you.
And just for clarification, CRT that you're referring to, critical race theory?
Critical race theory, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
And 1619. They've combined the two.
And the OSB policy that you're referring, or guidance that you're referring to is, or I'm sorry, the, the state school board?
State school board. They passed this resolution last July in the middle of the pandemic.
So there might have been other things going on, you're saying?
I, yeah. I pay close attention to news and I'd never heard of, anything of this until I found it online last week. And it makes references to white supremacy culture, hate speech.
What's the board policy, or what, what did they pass?
I'll give you a copy.
Okay, thank you.
Like, have you seen at least the numbers I can look at, please?
Yeah.
So Mrs. Dorish actually hit it out of the park in terms of what I was gonna say too, not to say ditto, but in the absence of Board President Snyder, I, I have been a staunch supporter of the district, the administrators and the staff for everything that they've done this year. One thing that I guess I haven't been as vocal about is appreciation and gratitude to the community as well for everything that they did in supporting their children in coming to school or in supporting their neighbors who might work for the district or things of that nature. Actually, I think as Mrs. Hamburg started the school year out with in terms of grace and, what was the second word? It was, grace was one. I don't know, but I, but I feel like-
Patience?
Patience is what it was. I feel like through the year, grace has been exhibited through all levels. And if I've been remiss in my appreciation anywhere, it's been to the community. So I appreciated Brad's article from that standpoint, and Sheri well said. The other thing I would articulate is, as this district has always tried to do in terms of looking at partnerships and ways to offset costs or do things kind of out of the box, I also appreciate the Eagle Examiner for the call-out of the turf field at what is currently the high school, what is in the future to be the middle school. And really, the impact that that will have and that partnership can have for this community. I think that's really well done. And I would invite anybody who may still be listening to certainly pay attention to that article. Thank you. The final thing that I would have to say would be for the students of the school year and their efforts. I am continually reminded that their level of resilience often is greater than ours. And even if we make decisions concerning their well-being that we think they may not be able to handle, there's not been a time yet in this district where the, where our students haven't risen to the occasion. So to them, I say thanks. And to our class of 2021. And Jacob, thanks for being here all these many months and for the hours of time that you've spent in listening to these types of conversations. And to you and your peers, seemed like a great prom. Seemed like it was a great school year. And you're right, we had it a lot better. Who had it better than Big Walnut? Not very many. Best wishes, bud.
Thank you.
I would just like to say another item that I believe was in the Eagle Examiner, I have not looked at my copy yet, should have been the Big Walnut Education Foundation. And I would just, I met with that group a couple of times this last month as they were making their decisions on scholarships and just appreciate working with that group. And it's amazing to see all that they do to support our students. I believe they distributed over $93,000 in scholarships to Big Walnut students this year. And that isn't an extraordinary amount because in the way that that seems to happen every year with that group. And appreciate all the things that they do to support our graduates. Thank you to Angie for, I was able to participate on the Eagle Ambassador's panel discussion. I appreciated being involved with that group. They had lots of interesting questions and actually kind of wish I had been able to attend all of their sessions because it's just a really good group of people that seem very interested in supporting the district in any way they can and with lots of questions. And also, I appreciated the opportunity to tour the high school with that group and be able to get in there since I had not been in there for a long time. And wow, it's gonna be amazing. Just, I can't wait. Then, couple of thank yous to Jacob Ross for sitting through these meetings with us and providing us with entertaining updates. And we appreciate all you've done and best of luck to Ohio State. And also, I didn't get a thanks in to Jen Young. You will be missed as one of my son's principals. And then to roll into your role here, appreciate everything you've done. And Laura, I think you're probably also on the countdown. And again, congratulations on your retirement and thanks for everything you've done for our district and our students over the last eight years, 10 years? So, thank you. That's all I have tonight. That takes us to item 11, public participation. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not considered a public community meeting. This is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Please reference criteria for public participation which is attached to the agenda. Jeremy or Angie, do you have anything tonight?
Hopefully so. I had one that indicated they might be here, but I don't, you know.
Okay. All right. On to item 12, business items. 12.1. It is recommended the board approve the May 2021 five-year forecast assumptions. Do you have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second. Any further discussion or questions for Jeremy?
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorish?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
No.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes. Item 12.2, it is recommended the, the board approve the following account transfers. $1,224.08 from 022-18909021 to 070-1890 Capital Projects Fund for general fund stale checks greater than five years old and $1,266.06 from 022-1890-9022-0000 payroll state stale checks fund to 0701890 Capital Projects Fund for payroll fund stale checks greater than five years old. Do you have a motion, please?
Second.
All right. So we, we reserve stale checks in a agency fund for five years, waiting for those to be claimed. If they're not claimed, we have the authority then to move those into, kind of write them off and use them in our capital projects fund. So these are the annual transfers of those funds.
Any questions for Jeremy?
Mrs. Dorish?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
And Mr. Ross. I apologize. All night I've been missing Mr. Ross. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item 12.3, it is recommended the board approve the fiscal year 2021 engagement letter between Big Walnut Local School District and the Local Government Services Section of the Office of the Auditor of State of Ohio. Do you have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
So this is the group that we have with the Division of the Auditor of State that does our CAFR compilation each year. They do a great job and we've had a longstanding relationship with them. So highly recommend to approve them for another year.
You do all the preparation and document stuff, right? It's not something that we get from them.
I provide, I provide them with the information then to, to do all of their GAAP accounting. So I don't actually do all of the debits and credits and, and those types of pieces, but I provide them with all the information to do so. Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorish?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item 12.4, it is recommended the board approve the 2022 tax budget for the community library. Do you have a motion?
Second.
Second.
And I am actually going to turn this one over to our guest, Mr. Chauncey Montgomery, to give a little update on the library as well as speak to this one. Chauncey, you wanna step up to the mic so the, everybody can hear you?
The masses are listening to you.
They were waiting for this. So, yeah, you have the 2022 tax budget in front of you there. It's a rather conservative budget. You guys were talking about state funding. Right now, we're going through the biennial budget cycle and our state funding, at this point, the, the proposal is to reduce it to a 1.66%. We're at 1.7% of the GRF. So we were hoping the House would increase if they didn't. We're now working with the Senate and hoping that they'll maintain it at the 1.7. But if they don't, then it will revert to 1.66% of the GRF. On top of that, there's a proposal to reduce income taxes 2%. And so that will reduce overall tax revenues to the state, which then in turn reduces revenue to the library. So we, we took a really conservative approach with this, really just increasing areas that we knew would, that, or areas that we felt like we should, especially youth services. As the community grows, we have a lot of young families. We have a lot of kids that use the library for school or just for recreation. We also have a lot of teens in the community and that's one area we've been trying to beef up. And you know, you see it after school, the kids walking through the community with nowhere to go. So we're, that's one area that's been a focus of ours that we're trying to accommodate here in the next several years. So we're trying to increase funding there in that, in that regard. And also with digital collections, especially with COVID, that we've seen a huge increase in our, our digital collection use. So we're shifting more money over that way because we think that's gonna continue from this point forward. Overall, the operating expenses in this budget are only increasing about 2.5% from what we budgeted this year, which is, like I said, really conservative. We're hopeful that maybe by the time we get to the end of the year, that, that will be a different picture. But at least that's what we got in this. So, and then other than that, I don't know, we're, just generally speaking, we were fortunate enough to keep the library open last year. And so we had an increase in circulation over the last year, which was pretty fantastic considering all that went on. It was a modest increase, but it was an increase. And also, last year, we, eight of the 12 months, we had record circulation. And that is including digital checkouts and stuff, but it still speaks to our community's interest in, in use of the library. And then right now, I'll thank Liana since she participated in this, but we're working on a master facility plan. So we're, you know, talking to the community and we're working with some consultants trying to figure out, you know, what's, what's the future of the library look and library services in this area. So that's something that we're hoping to wrap up here, middle of the year. So that, that's in the works. And then next Wednesday is the beginning of the summer reading program. And that's for all ages, from birth all the way up. So it's a great way for, especially for kids, to keep reading through the summer, keep that, that skill set up. But also as parents or grandparents, great way to model good reading behavior to your children or neighbors or whatever. So I encourage you to participate in that if you're able. So, you have any questions about the budget?
I'd just like to say thanks for including me in that master facility. That was an interesting session I'd actually shared with the board that, just how much we're appreciated and the fact that the library's looking at trying to become that almost community center kind of feel for our community and for our kids and to have a place to go and things to do. So.
Yeah, I think we're positioned well to at least help take the lead on that. Or so I, I appreciate everyone's participation in that. We had a lot of folks from around the community got good feedback from.
Any questions for Chauncey?
Mrs. Dorish?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
And at 12.5, it is recommended the board approve the 2020, 2021 graduating students. Do you have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
I'm gonna get a search from Jacob.
I know, I was gonna say, is he gonna read the list?
Might take a while.
Congratulations to all. Have a great weekend and be safe.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorish?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
And Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob Taylor-Ross, you are approved to graduate.
Item 12.6, it is recommended the board approve the resolution declaring transportation to be impractical for certain identified students. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Question?
Yes.
My copy says schools, not students. It should say students, right?
It should say students.
Um, you're approving the payment to the students, but it's because those schools are identified as impractical to transport to for us.
Well, I had it marked because usually it does say students in the past. I just wanted to make sure it was written right.
I think so.
Any other questions?
Okay. Mrs. Dorish?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item 12.7 is recommended the board approve the resolution authorizing the 2021, 2022 membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association. Do you have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
This is our annual approval. Without being members, our students are not able to participate in any tournaments. Or are they able to receive any post-season honors at the K level?
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorish?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item 12.8, it is recommended the board approve the following extended field trip varsity girls' basketball to Cedarville University Basketball Camp, June 10th through the 12th, 2021. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second. Angie?
Yes, I did send you some information on this. Obviously, the timing on this was pretty fast, just given the very fluid situation we've been in. But I did have a conversation with Mr. Shelton Athletic Director and with the movement in the health guidelines and orders. We are looking at approving trips that are in Ohio for a couple of reasons. One, we know what Ohio's guidelines are currently versus as we get into all these other states. Two, we can pretty much go anywhere in Ohio, and if a child did develop COVID, then we know a parent could be there two hours with our location. And then we're also looking at making sure that they have an approved, or I don't want to say approved, but a COVID plan that Mr. Shelton has reviewed and is comfortable with. So I told him, make sure those two things, Ohio, COVID plan, if you're comfortable, then send it to me for me to look at. So this one met those criteria. We know that these are great experiences for our kids. And I share with you, I still remember going to team basketball camp when I was a kid. So we're glad that we can get back to some of this normalcy for our kids.
My only question was, I, I know Mr. Shelton signed the, the approval as did Mr. Jados, but it mentions three, three adult coaches or chaperones. Am I, have, have we taken action on those folks? I'm assuming it's the current varsity coach and some assistants?
That's a good question, but I can confirm that typically they're approved before they would check or anything like that. I can verify.
That's, that's the only thing that I would like to know.
Okay, typically running checks.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorish?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item 12.9, it is recommended the Board accept the following donations.
I don't think you need to. I said it's noted in the agenda. I wanted to read.
May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Say thank you to all of those folks for their generosity and support of this.
Mrs. Dorish?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
13, human resources update, Mr. Cooper.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Looks like a long list here. I'll try to move through pretty quickly for you all and for those out there in the audience tonight.
The masses in the audience.
The masses that are out there. Under 13.1, recommending one-year contracts for these two individuals.